I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mark Mulder.
Here.
Doug Kolsinski.
Here.
Wendy Bradley.
Present.
Jim Schweitzer.
Present.
Robert McConnell.
Present.
Rachel Elzinga. Marita Proctor is present. You have oral.
Okay. Next is approval of agenda.
So moved, supported.
The move by Mr. Kozinski, supported by Mr. Mulder, that we approve the agenda. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next is approval of minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the minutes of the June 13th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting and the summary record of public hearing case number 522 page four.
Your part.
The move by Mr. McConnell, supported by Ms. Proctor, that we approve the minutes. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next is comments, items on tonight's agenda. Saying none. Correspondents none, all business none. Public hearings none, other business. Ms. Proctor.
We have before us today preliminary site plan review for the Ultium battery manufacturing plant the north side of Davis Highway between Genoa Road and Nixon Road, section 32 of Delta Township.
Mr. Bozey.
Mr. Chair, on the screen before you and at the front of the room, you see site location, that is the proposed location of the Ultium Battery Plant, Battery Manufacturing Plant. It lies on the north side of Davis Highway in between Nixon Road and Guinea Road. It is west of the Delta GM Assembly Plant. This is preliminary site plan review for that project. You have a staff report before you that I drafted dated June 22nd, 2022. It's the site itself is approximately 223 acres. It hasn't been created yet, but that's generally the proposed boundaries. And from the site plan, it's about 220 acres in size for the site. And then you've got a building, it's actually going to be two levels that going to contain 2,304, 710 square feet of manufacturing plant. That's a very large building. You've been presented with site plan sheets. You have a kind of a pared down version of the site plan. The original plan set was 108 pages. I didn't think you wanted to look through that. So you have about a dozen pages that I think are more relevant for your review that we're going to be discussing tonight. Pardon me because I've got administered the Zoom meeting as well. So we've got people entering the meeting, I do admit. The applicant has provided some renderings of the project. Watch this for up here so you can take a look at those. So you have these in your packets as well. So there's a kind of a long range view of the project. And then some elevational aerials that should extend to the.
Your packets as well.
If you're attending the meeting via Zoom, please mute. We don't, we aren't allowing any comments via the Zoom platform. So if you have any comments regarding what's going on, you can contact me after the meeting in the planning department at Delta. And again, further renderings. Followed by the site plan drawings. This in general is the site. We've got an aerial photo pulled up. You've got several old agricultural residential structures on the site that are going to be demolished as part of the project. You have an existing residence that's owned agricultural next to industrial. That's the Kreutz Farm is going to be maintained. The. Specific site plan standards that need to be addressed before we can move on with the project. And we need a positive recommendation from the planning commission this evening. First of all, the project is zoned industrial. It's also part of the 425 agreement we share with the city of Lansing. So we have a tax sharing agreement with the city for this area of the township. The comprehensive plan for Delta calls for industrial uses for the project. And this is consistent with that recommendation, this project. There is a traffic impact study that was submitted as part of the requirements for the project that has been reviewed by staff and the county road commission. The county road commission has prepared a critique of the traffic impact study, but they have yet to determine what improvements will be necessary on the adjacent roadways to accommodate the project. So is part of the approval staff recommending a stipulation that they receive the final approval from the county road commission as well as the required improvements to any of the adjacent roadways and maybe additional right of way required for to accommodate those improvements. The main access to the proposed plant will be from Davis Highway. Two entrances are proposed, one for trucks and one for employees in this area. And then the. Project will require the extension of utility easements as well to reach the plant. The utility plan shows. A proposed routing for utilities that goes north from the plant site through this area. And we've studied that area with terms of soil compatibility. There's wetlands up in here that would have to be disturbing. And it was kind of agreed that this is probably not the best routing for utilities. So there's a proposal for an alternate routing. One of them is to come on the east side of the existing Delta Assembly Plant and come down through here and eventually make their way up to the new Ultium plant. So again, approvals is recommended subject to writing any necessary easements in accommodating the township engineers requirements for the extension of water and sanitary sewer to the site. The fire department has been provided a copy of the site plans. They have yet to submit their comments with regard to hydrant locations and access around the building. I don't believe access is going to be a problem because the site's going to be designed to accommodate semi truck and trailer traffic. And if he can accommodate a semi truck, I'm pretty sure you can accommodate a fire apparatus around the building. So the main thing is going to be the fire hydrant locations and the fire department connection to the building in terms of their approvals. Again, staff recommend approval subject to their fire department's final approval. There are some wetlands that are going to be impacted certainly on the site. There are a lot of the northern property line of the proposed site that they want to carve out from the Delta or from the GM property. Those are reviewed and approved by the Michigan Department of Eagle Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. And so again, it's not a large incursion. There's really not any, there's a small portion of the building that might encroach on the wetlands and permits would be necessary for that if they're regulated from, from the state of Michigan. So that again, that's one of the stipulations that they receive those approvals from the state prior to zoning administrators signing the site plan. There's a ball of eagles nests and there's a buffer shown on the property, that circular area. No development is really proposed in that area. So that area will be remain protected as part of the project. There's also an archaeological area here. I'm not really sure, maybe the applicant indicate what, what the do not disturb area is and what they found there that they can't encroach on. So I'll leave it to them to describe that area. But again, this flight plan doesn't show any activity in that area in terms of development. Non motorized transportation, this area of township, the non motorized transportation plan does not show any non motorized facilities being desired or recommended in this area. For the industrial area, southern township. Again, non motorized transportation plan does not contemplate any improvements in this area of the township for that. Stormwater. There are several detention ponds proposed for this project, relocation of a storm drain. It is under review at the county drain commissioner's office. I don't have their final comments yet. So again, approval stipulated, subject to the receipt of the train office, a final approval of the site plans. There aren't going to be any private systems for wastewater or wells. The demo calls for the removal of several residential structures, agricultural structures on the property. One's shown here. There's another up in this area over here. If there are any septic or systems or wells associated with those, they have to be properly abandoned as per the requirements of the Bay Area District Health Department. So the wells would have to be plugged and I assume the septic tanks will have to be filled or collapsed in some manner. The ordinance talks about hazardous material storage on the site. Well, the fire department does require a hazardous materials inventory to be filled out for the project. The hell they'll have to do that in terms of the use of such materials. Those are regulated by the federal government and the state of Michigan. So we don't have any local authority with regard to that. So maybe they can expand on that for you this evening in terms of what types of materials are in the site. Landscaping is required for the parking area, a green belt along the frontage of Davis Highway and a portion of Nixon. And then the parking lot requires landscaping. There are sufficient parking spaces. In fact, it exceeds our requirements, but there's sufficient parking to require, to have parking for shift changes, overlaps, things like that. There's about 1,500 spaces, I believe, on the, on the site. Or there's 1,500 employees with 1,200 parking spaces being provided. This is the overall landscaping plan, as I mentioned before. This is the Kreutz Farm in this area. Buffer zones will be provided 50 foot wide along the budding property lines. Park lot landscaping is shown for, for the parking area. And then again, the green belts along the roadways. So landscaping is shown meets the requirements of the ordinance. They are counting some mature trees in these areas to count toward meeting the requirements. If those mature trees have to be removed for any reason, they'll have to be replaced with new trees. The landscape islands and the parkings have to, have to be curbed as per the ordinance. There will be a landscape shared agreement required to be executed with the township for the required landscaping. Other agreements necessary are the utility agreements for the extension of the water and sanitary sewer services, and those are being worked on at least speak by the township attorney. And staff is recommending approval, subject to 11 stipulations. There's a typographic error in one of the stipulations.
Number four.
Number four. So Mr. Schweitzer has the corrected language for that. Also attached to the staff report, you see a correspondence from the township engineer giving his, his comments regarding proposed developments. Some are informational, some are just, you know, his requirements in terms of water and sanitary sewer design parameters. That's all I have. I may have to ask any questions commissioners may have. It looks like we have plenty of representation from the applicant. So hopefully they can answer any questions you may have as well.
Commissioners, any questions of staff? Start off with. Mr. Mulder.
I might as well go. I don't know if this is to you or maybe some of the applicants can answer this. But when I was looking at this, I was kind of stunned by the amount of water that is going to be required in wastewater treatment. Okay. And I did a little research to see what exactly a battery plant needs so much water. And ironically, I had no trouble at all finding information on that. It seems that Tesla is building a gigaplan down in Texas. Okay. And I read on, and this is, this is a normal thing. The plant needs water and wastewater treatment. And I take it that it's for cooling of equipment and for washing of parts, whatever. And one thing we have in Michigan is we have water. And Texas really doesn't. So I thought, well, you know, in this frame, in the water situation here, I shouldn't be concerned because we can, we can work together on this. We, we have the ability to, to give them what they need.
That's correct. The engineer has indicated we have capacity to serve this use. And so, you know, all that remains now is to determine the exact routing to get to the new facility.
And it appears that Texas is struggling a little bit because of the capacity, the water that they need over there. There's concern about lowering the water table for what they have. Okay, we don't have that situation. We're good.
Something want to add? Want to comment on that, sir?
Sure.
Name address for, name address for the record, please.
Right. Brandon Rickles. 13353 Panema Drive, Baton, Michigan. So I will be the construction manager on the project. But essentially, the, the water loads are based off of the peak loads that we need. And a part of the manufacturing process requires extensive chilled water capacity. We use the chilled water capacity to remove humidity from the air. So this is like, what you're seeing is the peak, peak hottest day of the year because you have to refresh the water inside of the cooling towers. And that's the, the driver for the water during normal winter operations, other operations. You aren't going to see those peak demands or usage. So.
So are you going to, is part of the chiller operation involved in that then?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you use the cooling towers as a heat transfer device for the chills, chillers.
Okay.
Creating like 50 degree line.
Thank you. Just for the record for the commissioners, the revised wording on number four, as far as our stipulations, the applicant shall revise the plans to meet all conditions of the township engineering and utilities departments, including by not letting utilities, utilities, routing sizes, easement, locations, et cetera. Any other questions of, of the applicant or the staff? I have a few questions. First off, we've, they've got 30 racks for 30 bikes. Now, is there going to be any bike lane on Davis Highway? Did anybody have any knowledge on that item?
Yeah, again, we're still waiting comments from the road commission as to the actual improvements that are going to be necessary on Davis. Again, they've critiqued the traffic impact study. Those revisions that were required by the Eaton County Road Commission to the study, they haven't made, I have a final report, but I do not have an actual correspondence from the road commission telling us what is going to be necessary in terms of the road. I don't have that yet, so.
Okay, next off, on the traffic drawings, you've got the truck exit. You've got a right turn lane. I'm kind of befuddled as why that, why that's needed? Because if we were to go straight out to Davis Highway, we'd have to go out a mile out to Royce Road. You got basically a two track from there over to M100. The other option would be to go down Nixon Road south to Billwood. And those, neither, neither one of those roads are set up for, for heavy, heavy traffic. Well, maybe, maybe Nixon is with the, with the gravel route, gravel pit there. But other than that, I don't see why there'd be a need for a right, right turn truck lane out of the, out of the parking lot.
Matt Clark with Wade Trim. I prepared the traffic study and that is a good comment. I think we'll have to reassess that. I agree with you that there should be no need for a right turn lane there because we're not expecting any traffic, any truck traffic to go that direction.
Right. Yeah, because you've got an easy route to the highway going back east on Davis Highway to, to Canal.
Yep. And that's where we're, that's where intending all heavy vehicle traffic to go as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, question.
Ms. Bradley.
Are they, are you transferring employees here or is it going to be 1,500 new jobs?
These are new jobs.
These are new jobs in the area.
There's no real affiliation with, with General Motors, so they wouldn't be transferring. Correct?
I don't know. Do I have to go up there and answer it?
Identify speaker.
So, so Ultium is a joint venture, 50, 50, roughly 50, 50% owned in between General Motors and LG Energy Solutions to manufacture batteries.
Right.
Essentially for General Motors. There will be no transfer of employees in between the organizations. These will all be new positions that'll be coming to the area.
Thank you. Maybe you better stay here because I.
No, no problem. I have a couple of questions for you guys.
On round detention pond three, you got CES. Now, what is that, what is that, what does that stand for?
Okay, CSS. Yes, that is the electrolyte chemical that we use inside of the batteries.
Okay.
And so of course, some proprietary chemistry. But I, I mean, I think we, we know what it is.
Okay. All right. Now. On the drawing, they've got an SRP yard.
Right. Solvent recovery process in the battery manufacturing process to create the cathode for the battery. It's down on this side over there. That we, we recover an organic solvent that you used in the manufacture of the battery.
Now that was sulfur, what, please?
Solvent recovery process. So we use an organic solvent for a portion, for the cathode of the battery.
Okay.
And that we recover that and we recycle that chemical over and over again.
Do you have page C2A? Maybe it's, maybe you can show it from here.
No, I mean.
What is, what is the east of the, the M2 tanks?
East of the nitrogen. Those are essentially a part of the ventilation system that moves things to the solvent recovery process.
Okay.
So it's just a large pad with a bunch of heat exchangers and other equipment on top of it. Yeah, you can see right down there. The green.
All right. So as far as demolition, we're looking just at the three, three properties, the three homes and accessory buildings on the north side of Davis there.
Yes.
I know we've got that, we've got a.
I mean, there's one that's off of, what's the other side?
Nixon.
Nixon. That success accessed off of Nixon, but there's three properties.
All right. I guess that's all for now. Thank you. You know, anything do you want to add?
Well. Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're all very excited to be here. We're very excited to get started on this project. For us to maintain our competitive advantage, we need to start foundations as quickly as possible. We're, we're very much concerned about what exactly are the requirements that you're asking for around wetlands? We, we have one little, very small wetland that interfaces with one or two foundations of the building. We've submitted everything appropriately to obtain the approval. What, what is the township asking for in terms of wetland approval prior to a starting foundations? We're on a critical path where we want to start foundations tomorrow.
So you'll be required to submit the documentation from the state of Michigan that you can, if it's a non regular wetland, I'll need something from them saying that your incursion into that area is not regulated, so have at it. Or if it is regulated, I'll need the permit, the wetland permit for that area, for that incursion.
Okay. But we agree that we can start foundations work in all areas other than that? Or we need the permit?
No, you need complete site plan approval. So I think, I don't know if I've talked to you before on this or anyone else. The planning commission does not have the authority to waive a requirement of the ordinance.
Okay.
Those are set in stone. The only body that can do that is the zoning board of appeals. And that's a process that's determined by the state of Michigan. That's a 30 day process at least. So the ordinance is clear. No one has discretion to allow you to go forward until you have all the approvals from all the applicable agencies. It's written in black and white. I can't, I can't go beyond that. I don't have the authority to do that.
Okay. The, the other issue is, you know, we've just recently changed the routing of the, of the utilities, hopefully to make everything the better for, for everyone and for society, et cetera. And we're, we're struggling to understand exactly what the requirements are before we can get a permit to begin foundations on the site associated with that.
So utilities situation that's handled by our engineering and utilities departments. So there are two aspects of that. You have to finalize the routing and show revised plan where those new water and sewer lines are going to go. And then the other thing is that you need to execute the utility agreement with the township, which I think is nearing completion, but you'll check with Ernie West, the township engineer on the status of that.
Okay. That was, I I guess the other question and issue that we had for clarification. In the document, it was very inconsistent with the bicycle parking. Our belief was that we put bicycle parking on the drawings. There were statements that it was not on the drawings. And then there were statements that it was not required. I was lost.
Well, it is required. I didn't see it on the site plan. If you can point that out to me.
If you look right next, maybe that's not the right. It's right next to the entrance, the main entrance to the building, off to the right. Down, almost directly down from where your mouse was.
This area. How many are there?
Thirty.
Thirty.
My mistake. Apologize for that. So if they're already there, then we don't have to worry.
And I was also told that the hazardous material inventory was provided.
That's to the fire department, so I don't necessarily see a copy. So if that you've if you've handled that already, then you're fine, but that's not through me. That's through the fire department.
Okay. That's everything that I have.
Just for commissioners information, I don't know if everybody's noticed this, but there are ten recharging stations also on the on the drawings.
For publicists or?
For for the employees.
Oh, for their. And visitors.
Any further, any further questions? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to.
Pardon?
Have we closed this?
Public. Public hearing.
Yeah.
So.
I was gonna make a motion to.
Okay. See.
Okay, I'm glad that the Delta Township Planning Commission approved the preliminary site plans for the proposed ultimate battery plant. As illustrated in the site plans prepared by Tafari. And dated on May twenty first, two thousand twenty two, subject to the following eleven stipulations as listed.
Support. It's been moved by Ms. Bradley, support with Mr. Boudreaux that we approve the site plan. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Mr. Posen.
So Dolly, I'll work to finalize the site plans according to stipulations. Do you have any questions for utilities? That's the township engineering department. Again, I still need to sign off from my fire department. I have, I'll put a bug in there here first thing tomorrow morning. Get them moving on it. But the main thing are the county agencies. Why I haven't heard anything back from them, I don't know. I know you have your soil erosion sedimentation control permit, but I don't have anything telling me that. Your proposed storm drainage provisions on the slate are approved by them. Usually I get a letter from your consultants, Spicer Group, or directly from that office. I don't have.
We've been going back and forth with them.
Okay.
Up there, I think our last submission was like last.
Okay, okay, so then the road commission is kind of key too. I'm not really sure when they're add on it. You're not the only project I'm waiting on from them, but so you can, I'll try calling them, but you might want to kind of bug them too. Okay, okay, good. So we'll get you out here as quickly as we can. The ordinance is clear that I need all those other approvals before I can sign that.
Okay. Fire director comments.
I don't really have anything. If you have any questions about something you've seen going on, I can answer the questions. Otherwise, I don't have anything really new.
Yeah, just.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Updates that given the way things are going, you probably don't have an answer to. But I've been asked by a few people over the the past few weeks. A about the if we have any updates on the Delta crossing, in particular, the the home store. With its partially finished, and people were asking when that may go forward.
That's dependent on the pending litigation when that's settled. It's the other projects that are ongoing aren't affected by the litigation. That's the Olive Garden Restaurant and the Consumers Credit Union. So those projects are continuing on because they're separate entities now. But the the home store is still part of the the litigation, so we don't know.
Basically, what I told them is that it was an internal issue with the developer.
Yeah, we're not a party to to the litigation at all. It's actually two separate county courts, Eaton and Oakland County. So I'm not really sure when that's gonna all shake out.
And then I got asked just for general updates on whether there's, we've heard anything by way of plans for the Lansing Mall, which I get I get asked periodically.
Don't have anything new on that front. You know, there's. The only thing that we haven't received any kind of plans yet, but Zapzone has purchased the old Yonkers. For.
Free, right?
For moving into that space. You've already seen the plans for. Own site for self storage.
Yep. Yep, and then the last one was somebody just asked kind of casually about the old Gabriel's High School.
Okay.
Rafferty.
Or Rafferty.
Nothing new on that. So we we were approached by a group that wanted to do multi-family housing, demolish the high school. Do multi-family, but there's an issue with sanitary sewer. They'd have to upgrade one of the lift stations or to make that project work. So the engineering department is trying to figure out exactly what improvements would need to be made in order to accommodate a development like that. No application has been filed. It's just more of an inquiry, so we'll see. I should know. I don't know if you'll remember several years ago, we did a place making exercise. With the state of Michigan grant, Mark Boykov came in and we did several workshops for place making. And what is proposed for the Rafferty site is exactly what the place making room determined was ideal for that situation. So we may, we may see something. I don't know. Just kind of stay tuned.
Mr. Chair. Mr. McConnell. I was just going to tell the people in the audience, if you're here for the battery issue, you're welcome to stay, but you're not obligated to stay to the end of the meeting. If you enjoy it, you're welcome.
As far as I had home. If there's any lengthy delay with the with the model, high winds that we've been having in recent years. There's no reinforcement on those walls, I don't believe. I don't know if there's any, anything that can be brought to bear or to get.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the building department is requiring any kind of shoring up of that. If well, they're waiting to figure out what's going to go on. And the problem is that all the parties involved in construction, they're kind of mad at each other. For lack of a better term, so I'm not sure who would take responsibility for doing that.
Also, is there still still what construction work going on at the at the power plant, Erickson Power Plant?
Yes. Yeah, I don't. I don't think they're totally complete yet, but they're pretty close.
Because I've seen signs out there, construction entrance, pointing that out. I just.
Yeah, I think there's still, there is still some work going on. I think the bulk of the project is complete though.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else? Or take a, have accept a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. Moved by Mr. Boudreaux, supported by Mr. McConnell that we adjourn. All favor say aye. All opposed, motion carry. Six forty.